Recording. The time is now five thirty. Good evening and welcome to the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. I am Zakiya Goins McCants, Committee Chair and District Eight Board Member, and it brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Like to inform the public that Spanish interpretation is available by clicking on the globe at the bottom of the screen. Ms. Acevedo, could you assist with translating this announcement in Spanish?
Of course. Buenas tardes a todos. Ya estamos comenzando nuestra reunión de septiembre diecisiete del dos mil veinticinco, la reunión de operación. Y vamos entonces a comenzar con diciéndoles a ustedes de que tenemos interpretación en español. Si usted desea escuchar esta reunión en español en la computadora, en la sección Zoom en la parte baja de la pantalla, habrá un globo de interpretación, haga clic en ese globo y seleccione español. En un dispositivo móvil, en la sección Zoom en la parte baja de la pantalla, toque el icono del eclipse, que son los tres puntitos. En la parte derecha, toque el lenguaje, language interpretation, y toque español. Entonces puede escucharnos a nosotras interpretando esta reunión simultánea en español en el cuarto.
Thank you so much, Ms. Acevedo.
You're very welcome.
For those unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on the PGCPS YouTube channel.
Y para aquellos que no puedan entonces vernos, esta reunión va a ser grabada y nos puede ver en el PGCPS de YouTube.
Ms. Woodridge, please call the roll.
Mrs. Goins McCants.
Present.
Mrs. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Ajikaye.
Here.
Dr. Andiffel. Ms. Walker.
Present.
Chair Jackson. There are four present.
Thank you, Ms. Woodridge. With the quorum present, the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting will come to order. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda. There being no objections, the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda is adopted. If there are no corrections, the June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes shall be approved as distributed. There being no corrections, the minutes are approved. So now we're going to move on to public comment on agenda items. Registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded using video, audio, or written. There are four live speakers this evening, and there are no pre-recorded videos, audio, or written testimony for the meeting tonight. To our public commenters, you have registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments but will not address them. You will have three minutes to make your presentations. Speaking time may not be relinquished to another registered or unregistered individual. You may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted, and you may be removed from the meeting. You are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, superintendent, etc. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. Our first live speaker is William Enderlin, individual speaking on teacher's annual budgets and school supplies. Okay.
He has been requested to come as panelist. He may need to accept it, Chair Goins McCants.
Thank you. I think I see him popping up at the bottom.
Yes, I am here.
Thank you, Mr. Enderlin.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Woodridge, please start the timer.
I would like to thank you all for allowing me to speak to start with. And apologies if this is not quite the right format for this, but I'm new to all this. I have a very close friend of mine who's a teacher in PG County Public Schools. And I'd like to talk about the challenges with budgeting for teachers. My friend actually, well, for first of all, they hasn't gotten a budget for this year yet, so doesn't know how to order things. Also, they're a science teacher, so they don't necessarily know what subjects they're going to be teaching in any given year. Last year, they got their budget orders in March and then found out that they were not teaching the same subjects, so they their budget kind of got squandered. And this, and on top of that, they have, they have three different subjects, two hundred and forty kids, and a total budget of six hundred dollars. That's two and a half dollars per student for an entire year. Some of these students are expected to do twenty labs to complete their course of study in a year with a budget of two dollars and fifty cents a student. Now, what I can tell you is that that's simply not enough money. And normally, the budget shortfall gets covered by one of two ways. We either become fundraisers to try to raise money from external sources, or we pay it ourselves. And that's just, that's really hard for me to believe, that the money's, the money's not there. Most important thing is the students and their education, and they're the ones who aren't getting the money. There's, in the, the school that she teaches at, there's no school supplies at all. There's not a, there's not a storage closet or a supply closet or anything to get, like notebooks, pens, pencils, highlighters, nothing. So anything that they, they don't have, we have to get it from somewhere. And that's a sad, sad situation, and it needs to be rectified somehow. I don't know how the budget gets allocated, but somebody A, needs to figure out like the timeline, so budgets get allocated like in a, in a timely fashion, and B, so the budgets are actually usable for, for students, and the students are the most important thing. So give the teachers and the students what they need, so they can, they can teach and learn. Anyway, that's all I really have. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enderlin. Next, we will have Shannon Wilk, individual speaking on protections and supports for immigrant students and their families.
She is here also. She needs to agree to the invitation to be promoted. She declined to be promoted, and she has signed out.
Okay. Our next speaker is Janay Lee, individual speaking on Friendship Public Charter School and the lack of transparency and accountability.
The person doesn't seem to be here.
No problem. Last but certainly not least, Shontae Tramel, individual speaking on Friendship Aspire STEM Academy. Express concerned about lack of resources.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Thank you for the board for allowing me to speak. My name's Shontae Tramel, and I'm a parent of Friendship Aspire STEM Academy. I just want to begin on a positive note. Last year, my son had a truly encouraging experience there with the smaller classes, dedicated teachers, and all the academic growth that was happening. It gave me so much hope for this charter school. I believe what made the difference was the attentiveness of staff, structure, and consistency, and the extra resources such as a special education staff member to assist those students with special needs. Even with the school facing unexpected departure from the principal, the community can't, still came together, together last year, and we persevered. So this summer, I was also cautiously optimistic, optimistic when the new principal and nearly all new teachers was brought to the school. I was concerned about the turnover, but still, the jumpstart orientation and the frequent communication just gave me a lot of hope. But as I observed as a volunteer parent there, I grew deeply concerned about the resources there, that they lacked. And many families have withdrew because of that. I won't speak to specific operational issues, but there are issues with communication systems, storage issues, things that, the simple things that the school should have, but I will speak on academics. So the curriculum guides in particular wasn't delivered until two weeks in the school year, and this is an issue for me because I value the academic side of, of education and, and, and just the operational stuff just really didn't matter. When I learned that the curriculum guides didn't get there too late, it really was disheartening and I wanted to understand what happened. So I just want to just understand where, like some of, some of us parent volunteers fill in the gaps for teachers because the substitute teaching or, or all the teacher wasn't hired on time, so we were jumping in. And I don't think that's sustainable as a parent to, nearly every week I was there, at least helping in some type of capacity. So what I'm asking for you specifically is to help us understand what proper resources can be provided for the school. Also build accountability between the charter and the PG County leadership there, and make sure our teachers have training and the tools they need to help our students thrive, because I really want to continue being a member of Friendship Aspire, but we just need help and resources to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Now we will move on to our presentations, starting with our budget timeline. The chair recognizes Ms. Smith, Director of Business Management Services for the budget timeline.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Chair Goins McCants. As she mentioned, my name is Siobhan Smith. I'm the Director of Budget and Management Services, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about a revised timeline. And I can follow it up with something in writing once we have this discussion. But I've talked to the superintendent, I've talked to the Chief Financial Officer and the Chief of Staff, and we've kind of reviewed proposed changes that we would like to make for the FY twenty-seven budget development timeline. So typically, in the past, the superintendent would provide his proposed budget to the board early December. And then there would be a period of time between December and I would say February, where the board would review the budget, and then they would have what we call the requested cycle, where they would issue their Board of Education requested budget. And within that, we would try to cover amendments, we would do the work sessions, public hearings. And then we transition into the approved, approved budget cycle for ultimately providing the final budget to the board sometime in June. Usually, it's that last board meeting in June for the Board of Education approved budget. What we are proposing is a shift so that instead of presenting a proposed budget in early December, we presented it late January. That gives us time that would be after the governor's budget is released, after we've received the state aid document from MSD. That also will be a more well-informed budget that we can put forward to the board for consideration. There would still be in February, and maybe, yeah, mainly in February, January, February timeframe, there would still be public hearings, still be board work sessions. We would still receive board amendments, but ultimately, it would, it would give, one, the administration more time to present a more thoughtful, more inclusive budget. It would also provide the board more time for their review, discussions, changes, without it feeling so condensed. Ultimately, then, after the superintendent presents his budget in late January, then we're proposing that we present a final budget reconciled with the board the end of, you know, sometime, hopefully, the first board meeting in June. Usually, there are two. We would try to do it early June versus late June. That would help us meet our deadlines and our timelines externally with MSD easier. It also, within that, we also want to move up the timeline to, for school-based budgets. Normally, we start that process maybe around February, March. We want to give schools more time. We also, because of blueprint, we want to make sure that we are a lot more thoughtful and methodical on what the formula would look like for our schools. And so we want to move that timeline up to more of a December-January timeline so that as the board, as the superintendent presents his budget the end of January, it can include some more relevant assumptions for our school budgeting. That's kind of where we are with the timeline. We want to kick off. We really wanted to kick off in September, but we probably won't kick off budget formulation until early October. I know that the superintendent and our chief of staff, they're going to work closely with the board to get priorities and help align the board and the administration so that it can facilitate the direction that the budget needs to go in for fiscal year twenty-seven. We also want to include the board and have more touchpoints with the board throughout the budget process. Not necessarily just for these public hearings and budget, and the board work sessions, but throughout throughout the process. We want to get the board's feedback. We want to get their input early and often. We want to get the administration working with board members. If there are things that they already know that they would like to see in the budget so that we can start working through what that would look like earlier. So we just want to make sure that we are building in extra time or additional time. One, for strategic priorities. Two, to reshape the budget as we see fit based off of those priorities to ensure that blueprint is woven into every fabric of the budget so that we can better meet the requirements. And three, that communication is clear. We have regular touchpoints, and that, that it can enhance transparency both between board and administration, but also with communities. So with that being said, I just wanted to thank you guys for your time and consideration, and please let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Thank you so much, Director Smith. Board members, I already see a hand up, so obviously there are questions. Each member will be permitted two rounds of discussion per item, with each round limited to two point five minutes. Should a third round be necessary, it will require a formal vote for approval. So we will start with Board Member Walker.
Hey there. Thank you so much, Director Smith, for the information. I am such a fan of additional touchpoints to ensure that we are all aligned and make sure we can get information out to the public. My question to you was, can you just talk about the earlier touchpoint in the beginning? Because I thought what you were saying earlier is that you wanted to push out when we would first see the budget until after the governor's information was received, but then it sounded a little later like you meant that we were getting it earlier. So can you just confirm what you meant there, please?
Absolutely. So the superintendent would present a proposed budget to the board, but we want to bring in the board early. We were hoping to have kind of like a board budget retreat where we can just kind of talk about the budget. That would have, we wanted that to happen sometime in September. But what what I am thinking is that, you know, through the superintendent's touchpoints, and he can help shape when he wants to bring, let's just say, me in to have conversations, or if I just need to shape something for him or Dr. Collins, where he would regularly, all throughout October, November, December, kind of talk about where we are with the budget, the current budget, which serves as our baseline for twenty-seven, right? So that's our story, our starting point right now is the current fiscal year twenty-six budget. And so if there are changes to this budget, you know, if there are questions about this budget, concerns, if we want to shift directions, if we want, based on the priorities, if we want to invest in other things, divest in some things, we can kind of have those conversations for Member Walker all throughout the fall and early winter.
Yeah, I do have a follow-up. I'm looking at the time, and it went away, but I will come back for the second round for that one. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Board Member Walker. Dr. Andiffel.
Good evening, everyone. Apologies for not being able to be on camera this evening. Thank you for the presentation and some of the updates you've provided. I'll just, I have a recommendation just moving forward. I know you are kind of speaking loosely to the previous timeline that we used for the budgeting process, and then have spoken to some proposed changes. I think moving forward, it would be really helpful if you could provide a visual of some of what you just described, just described. You know, former teacher here, but also just recognizing just different learning styles. And it was a little challenging for me to follow some of what you were referencing. So if you could please just provide a visual, I think that would be helpful both for the board as well as the public.
Absolutely, and I will definitely get something over to you guys. I can probably do that tonight.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Andiffel. Vice Chair Brown.
Thank you so much, Chair Goins McCants, and thank you so much, Siobhan Smith, for taking this undertaking, because I know that it's a lot, especially with the limited team. But I did want to, I wanted to bring this up just to the public, to my fellow board members. We are still working on an antiquated system. And this is why things are taking a lot longer than what they need to, to be. Have we looked into other alternatives? I know previous meetings, we talked about using artificial intelligence. We've talked about possibly contracting. Is that something that has been discussed so that, you know, moving further on, we're not continuously pushing a date where board members are not sure if they're able to, you know, put in their amendments? Not saying that was compromised, but this just seems to be a consistent cycle throughout the years. And I just want to know if part of that, that budget or that budget recommendation that you all are going to be making is possibly an updated system and possibly something where it's not as antiquated so that you all are able to do your job in a much more efficient manner.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate that comment. So in the, in the fiscal year twenty-six budget, we did add funding for an upgraded ERP system to help bring us, because right now we are working on a legacy Oracle system that needs to sunset. And that is, sometimes it, it provides a lot of challenges. We have a lot of customizations to our Oracle, and there are just times where Oracle just is not as robust. It's not as flexible, and it's not as dynamic as we need it to be, to be as responsive as we want to be. So however, as you know, it takes, it's a process, right, to go through the procurement process to get the new system onboard, and that also is an undertaking because it requires, you know, making sure that our business requirements are on point, right? Because garbage in, garbage out, right? So we want to make sure that our requirements in are sound, that we are thinking about all the things that we want the system to do. But that is part of the twenty-six investment that will carry into twenty-seven. So however, as we go through this formulation for fiscal year twenty-seven, we are probably still going to be in our legacy work system.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Just as a follow-up to that, the next time that you all come to the meeting, can you give us an update on how that system is progressing, the procurement, etc., on that system especially, since it's so vital to your work?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you so much, Director Smith. So we can now move on to second round, and we will go back to Board Member Walker.
Thank you, and this will be really quick. Thanks to Dr. Andiffel asked one of my questions just about the visual, just so we can understand ourselves, and we can get it out to our constituents as well to say, hey, this is the timeline of what was, and here's the improvements of where we're going, just so we can have more time to be able to look at it, which means they'll have more time to look at it. So thanks in advance for that. Secondarily, I know, I do recall that there were enhancements and simplifications being done to the budgeting process itself. And so I was wondering if you could just talk to us about any enhancements that's already been made to the process itself, whether it's the spreadsheets that we're going to use, how we're going to give information. And then, Ms. Smith, if you can, I know you mentioned that we will be giving constant feedback, and the superintendent is taking a look at what that process is going to be. You don't have to answer it now, but if you can give feedback to him on what might be a process that we can use. So if we're looking at fiscal year twenty-six, for instance, the one that just passed, then if I go into that budget there, and I have ideas about how we can streamline it, where is the shared document that I can just go in and say, here are the modifications for your consideration, which might help you all? So the first that I'd like to talk to real quick is what simplification and modifications were done? And secondarily, if you can just take that back to the superintendent. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. We'll do, and then for your first part, so some of the simplifications and modifications are we are trying to streamline. In the past, just even this past year, when we were formulating twenty-six, we had maybe five or six workbooks. We are trying to condense that down to three workbooks, where you have one staffing workbook, one discretionary workbook, and then any board changes. Those would be three separate workbooks versus, you know, the program enhancement workbook, the staffing work, we had a lot. So we're trying to streamline that on the front end. We are, and I, we are trying to encourage our chiefs to get board feedback as they are working on their budget, but also understanding that we are in a lean year, our resources are limited, and so we don't have a lot of room for wish lists and enhancements. That doesn't mean that we don't want to be aware of new initiatives. It just means that any new initiatives that will be funded, something else may have to get reduced or unfunded, if that makes any sense. So wanting to have those touchpoints early and inclusive, not just with the chiefs, but to include the board so that when you do get the proposed budget in January, you are already aware of what's in it and what changes we were making.
Thank you so much, Director Smith. I do not see any additional hands, so I want to make sure I give people the opportunity if we have any more questions. Seeing none. Even though we are in the presentation section, we did have somebody who had some issues joining for public comment. And I have been told that Janay Lee is now with us. So if that person would like to give their public comment now. We're just waiting for her to accept the invitation to move over to panelists.
There we go. Thank you so much. May, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. I apologize. Got my times mixed up. And thank you so much for taking additional time out of your schedule to allow me to speak. Good evening, committee members and members of the school board. I just wanted to express my concern as a parent of the Friendship Aspire STEM Academy. So again, good evening. I'm here to express my urgent concerns regarding class sizes, staffing, and administration of Friendship Aspire STEM Academy. The current situation is unacceptable and reflects a troubling lack of transparency, strategy, and accountability. The average classroom at Friendship now The average classroom at Friendship now far beyond, now sees far beyond the promised limit of twenty two students. As we remain in open enrollment, nearly forty families have withdrawn their children while new students continue to arrive. We are assured that Friendship Aspire would be located within the South Lake community, yet we find ourselves at Excellence Church. With uncertain plans to relocate to the closed Excel Academy and issues with the current investors. Currently, second grade operates with only three classrooms instead of four and kindergarten has one teacherless classroom. Of the fourteen teacher positions, only two are filled by returning teachers, leaving eighty six percent of staff inexperienced. This has led to poor instructional quality and a reliance on parent volunteers for teaching roles, which is unacceptable. One individual is leading this effort and his actions demonstrate a troubling disregard for parent concerns, suggesting that he feels above Prince George's County. If he does not listen to us, I hope that he does listen to you all as a school board. If these issues persist, we risk significant enrollment decline jeopardizing our children's education and potentially violating Prince George's County Public School policies. And Maryland education regulations. Parents are understandably distressed over the lack of proactive planning. We urge the Office of Public Charter Schools, the Charter Foundation Board and Prince George's County Public Schools to take the following immediate action. Conduct a random inspection of the school, assess leadership and administration accountability. Provide adequate teaching staff, including special educators and counselors, as there are no, currently no resources for students needing IP or five oh four assessments. Ensure proper training and mentorship for all newly hired teachers. Develop a concrete growth plan to address staffing, budget shortages and long-term needs. I stand before you as a voice of a parent of the community which is fed up. We have exhausted conversations, emails and calls. This is the only beginning of the school year and this is unacceptable. Our children, your children deserve better. I urge you to prioritize their education immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. And I don't think I remember to thank uh. Director Smith, but thank you so much for your presentation. We are now going to move on to our capital improvement plan uh, presentations. And at this point, the chair recognizes Dr. Coleman, our Chief Operations Officer for the Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you so much, Board Subcommittee Chair Goinz McCants, uh, and good evening, board members. Uh, parents, guardians and members of the community and staff. Uh, as it was stated, my name is Dr. Sharoska Coleman and I have the privilege of serving. As the Chief Operating Officer for the Prince George's County Public School System. Uh, joining me is the Associate Superintendent for Supporting Services, Mr. Jason Washington. The Director of the Capital Programs Department, Mrs. Shayla Taylor. Project Management Supervisor, Mr. William Smith and Capital Planning Supervisor, Mrs. Kayla Anthony. Uh, the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, is a multi-year spending plan focused on the long-range vision. Of modernizing our portfolio of school buildings. Through the CIP, educational facilities are planned, designed, renovated and constructed. Based on the prioritization of needs established in the Educational Facilities Master Plan. Directly following today's presentation, a CIP public hearing will take place beginning at six thirty PM. At that time, our staff looks forward to hearing valuable feedback from parents, guardians and other community members regarding the CIP. So at this time, uh, the Director of Capital Programs, Mrs. Shayla Jackson, will share a presentation focused on the FY twenty seven. Proposed Capital Improvement Program Request.
Awesome. There we go. Good evening, everyone. Um, Committee Chair, esteemed board members. Um, thank you for this opportunity and the schedule adjustment that allows us to use this time to visit this continuation year in our capital planning. Um, as advertised, we're going to focus on the CIP tonight, but I'm going to take the liberty of a very, very short detour just to remind everybody. Of the integrated roles of the EFMP and CIP. I'd just like everyone listening, whether student or parent or neighbor, to be on an equal footing for these conversations. Um, so we'll visit those at a very high level before we dive into the CIP. I think if the agenda is on the next page, I'm sorry, next slide. There we go. Um, um, then we'll look at what was approved last year as the FY twenty six CIP and what will be requested as the FY twenty seven CIP. I will add that I, I'm taking great pains to restrain myself from starting this conversation in nineteen oh two, like I was indulged to do last year with the facility history. And investment records, but I did drop all that information into the appendix slides. As well as some project status data and some, I think, helpful EFMP definitions, so. Uh, if it's not now, it'll be very shortly available on the Capital Programs website. So on the next slide. Um, we're just going to hit how it all works together because the EFMP and CIP are really best considered together. Because they're so intertwined in their missions. I'm going to suggest that we think of the EFMP um, as our compass. It's the master plan that sets our direction on the journey to have a modern fleet of schools. And the CIP as our checkbook that funds this great journey. Um, on the next slide, you can see that our compass, the EFMP is driven by data. Can we get to the next, oh, there we go. Um, and there are three principal guiding stars pretty much the world over for a school system to go about this hard work of quantifying need. And using that to determine a responsible priority order to replace and renovate existing schools and build new schools. And their facility condition, facility enrollment and the adequacy of each facility to function as a safe, modern school. The process is also informed by other compelling and evolving factors from sustainability to changing academic programs. And the only other thing I'll add here is that since our current EFMP was adopted in twenty seventeen, it really has been an unyielding compass. In our current modernization campaign for the last decade. On the next slide, you, um, I'm going to try to go through this one pretty quickly. Um, but I will highlight that there definitely has been a funding gap. The cost for the implementation of our current CIP. Was four hundred and twenty-five million dollars a year in twenty fourteen dollars. And that's five hundred and seventy million in twenty twenty-four dollars. And we're averaging closer to one hundred and eighty million dollars annually, yet we've seen unprecedented investment from multiple sources. And it's really been pushed by many, many advocates. And we're in the most prolific building period in PGCPs history, second only to the baby boom of the late sixties and seventies. So I'm going to encourage you there again to visit that appendix. And the only thing I'm going to note is that big yellow box right there is that it's time to set the next leg of our journey. So within the next thirty days. We'll launch the full EFMP update and we'll be able to be more specific in sharing its execution milestones. And its robust communication and engagement plan soon. I just encourage the public to show up here kind of loud and proud because. This is absolutely the most effective moment to advocate in the capital planning process because we do hold to that compass pretty tightly. Um, as we move forward for such a long-range vision. Uh, the next slide. Getting into our work here today, um, the visionary work of the EFMP is fabulous, but it is at the mercy of the checkbook, that is the CIP. And the CIP's assignments are quite a bit different. Because it has to move forward that EFMP long-range vision for tomorrow while addressing today's needs. So just a very quick definition, when you see CIP, sometimes you see FY twenty twenty-seven to FY twenty thirty-two. Capital Improvement Program. And that whole thing just means that we're requesting funds in the form of appropriations. Which is debt financing for us by the sale of bonds for that first year, so that's what that FY twenty twenty-seven is. And then we also must project spending for the following five years, so that's that twenty-eight to thirty-two part. And that makes sense because we have that multi-year nature of our projects and their long delivery timeline, so we ask for a bit. Of each school for each year. Um, so when approved this year, right, we'll only have access to the FY twenty-seven funds. And that on July first, twenty twenty-six, and so we'll come again and we'll kind of knock down that next section. So the CIP has four main assignments and they all compete with each other. First, the CIP has to build schools in the order the EFMP sets. Second assignment is that the CIP must replace systems. Now, this isn't in the EFMP order, this is more in the age order. So this year you'll see Capitol Heights Elementary School win, windows, you'll see CT Reed Elementary School roof replacement. Those are end-of-life cycle replacements, they're at the end of their youth, um, useful life cycles. The third assignment is to upgrade facilities. Examples this year are the Southern CTE Hub at Crossland and Duval High Stadium Upgrade. There's also central garage and transportation improvements that would fit into this category. Uh, the fourth assignment is that the CIP must execute facility repairs. These are mostly identified by our maintenance shops. Uh, examples in the FY twenty-seven request range from. Bathroom partitions at Fort Foot Elementary School, John Bane Elementary School needs a generator. Parkdale High School's elevator requires modernizations and there's some parking lot improvements, there's. Playgrounds and those all um, constitute this repair category. On the next slide, we are finally about to look at what was approved last year in the FY twenty-six CIP. And that was adopted finally in June twenty twenty-five. So on the next slide, I, I include this because I personally need context to understand numbers. So this is just a snapshot of recent funding, so you can have an idea where this most recent funding approval right there at the bottom for FY twenty twenty-six. Falls in. So I remind you, we mentioned needing five hundred and seventy million a year to execute the master plan as envisioned. But you can see that the FY twenty-six was not that. But at the same time, this hundred and fifty-two million dollar total is definitely not a record low. And we, we were on a down slope there, um, and from twenty-three to twenty-four to twenty-five. And then I just also want you to note that sometimes if you see these numbers that are different. Sometimes we're including the grants, but in this one I didn't want to. I wanted you to be able to compare apples to apples. And this is just, make no bones about it, debt funding, these general obligation bonds that are CIP funding is the foundation of capital. Funding for PGCPs. I wanted it to be very clear where the bulk of our funding was or wasn't. Uh, on the next slide, we're going to get into what was actually approved. Um, for the quiz after this presentation, that background photo is the incredible Suitland High School CVPA auditorium full of scaffolding. So in FY twenty-six, what was approved here, you can see Suitland, Cool Spring, William Schmidt and New Northern were funded as shown. This represents a hundred percent of the funding requests for three of the projects. New Northern um, was funded at fifty percent of our requests because we had a fund balance that was available to pay for some ongoing design work. Since that project required extra design um, due to stream protection requirements. On the next slide, you can see that High Point, Riverdale and Crossland were all um, funded at three hundred thousand dollars each. On the next slide, these are systemic replacements. This is that section we talked about in the CFIP, the CIP, where all of these systems are at the end of their useful life cycle. So the state approved twelve systemic replacement projects and these will really help us secure the envelopes of our existing facilities. A lot of these are awaiting modernization in the distant future. But as their windows and roofs fail, we're facing water infiltration and all the problems that cause and the exacerbation, not just. Um, of issues to the ability to teach, but the cost to repair and then to repair. Everything that water infiltration causes from structural damage to mold abatement. I just want to note that we call these state projects because the state contributes, but there's a cost share formula that determines what percentage that is each year. And I think in FY twenty-six, it was sixty-eight percent state-funded and thirty-two percent county-funded. Um, the next slide, please. And these are the countywide categories. This is where there's an eight million dollar difference in our historic average in these categories. That doesn't look significant when you just saw those big major projects, but it really does reduce the amount of minor repairs and improvements. That we can make across the county in way that almost everyone can touch and feel. Um, from our, our, our now shared CIP knowledge, these categories perform three out of four of those assignment areas we talked about. It's. Mainly facility repairs, but there's upgrades, there's stadium upgrades and there's central garage and transportation upgrades. And we also do those capital replacements we talked about in that HVAC category. And right here, I just want to really quickly answer a public question we got at CIP at PGCPS dot org. And the question was, does this name countywide categories mean that our other projects can be spent outside of Prince George's County? And no, that's not, that's not what the name means. Every CIP dollar is definitely spent within the county without exception. These just appear by category name in the county budget book, as for example ADA upgrades and not by a school name like Suitland High School. And the next slide, I think we are finally to the FY twenty-seven CIP. And there's a few highlights here. Our debt target from the County Office of Management and Budget is a hundred and forty-four million this year. That's actually a twelve percent increase over FY twenty-six, so that's good. Um, the spending plan is always close to one point eight billion dollars at this current funding level. Um, as you look at those five out years with adjustments up or down. Again, that, that's a projection. And the draft request right now is sitting at two hundred and three million dollars. We still expect various grants to be added to this eventual approval, but this represents our bond request. On the next slide. You're starting to get the sense that every single CIP is by definition a continuation of the previous year. Because of that five-year spending plan component. Um, and, and that fits the multi-year funding we talked about and also the long delivery timelines and the sheer scales of these new schools. But this year, we really are ten toes down on that continuation definition because we don't present any new major projects. Outside of those age-based systemic replacements we saw. So you see the exact same projects. As in the FY twenty-six approval, requesting another year of funding here. So you see Suitland again, you see Cool Springs again. Um, you see High Point again, these appearing as expected. I will note that William Schmidt was expected to fall off this year. But the state voted to increase its maximum allowable state contribution in recognition of the final scope of work there. So this is just us requesting the three point zero one seven million that the state has already approved. That's good news. Um, on the next slide, we also have the next round of requests for New Northern Area High School. The Southern Area CTE Hub at Crossland and the Riverdale Pre-K Center. On the next slide, we again are trying to look at different funding options to secure those envelopes we talked about. So we're asking the state to participate in eight systemic replacements, that's four window replacements at Capitol Heights, Buck Lodge, Barnaby Manor and Oxen Hill. And four roof replacements, I think we already talked about Catherine T. Reek, but also Kettering Elementary School. And James McHenry in Fort Foot have roof replacements that were actually approved with a healthy school um, facility fund grant. And just so nobody thinks that there's a, there's trickery when they see the final CIP. Uh, Cooper Lane was actually partially funded for a window replacement in twenty-six, so it will actually come back in the FY twenty-seven CIP. To request the balance of state funds, but we didn't show it here. And then on the next slide, the countywide categories are slightly reduced this year, I think by four million dollars in total. Just to balance affordability, but they still cover those HVAC replacements we talked about, those facility upgrades for bus lots and stadiums. And quite a bit of facility repairs um, countywide. Then I just want to give you the timeline on the next slide. And that is just a heads up, sort of that board approval is expected on September twenty-fifth. Then after that, the CIP will be submitted to the state and county in October. In November, we will show up on the county council agenda for what is called the Letter of Support or the Joint Letter. And that just represents that the county is agreeing to meet that match we talked about for the state-funded projects. And then the FY twenty-seven to thirty-two CIP is expected to be approved. In um, May and June of twenty twenty-six and adopted, the funds are then available on July first. And that is it.
Thank you, Director Jackson and Dr. Coleman. I see several hands up for questions, so we'll start with Vice Chair Brown.
Thank you so much, Chair Goinz McCants, and thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. I appreciate. The visuals, you always do great with this. Um. I had a question though, who sets the EFPM priority? Uh, order and what was the criteria for that? I know that if you can condense that. Um, because it seems like, and I'll be transparent, I didn't see any of my schools on there and I know my schools have concerns. Um, so what, what, can you kind of explain what that looks like uh, for our constituents, please?
Yeah, so for the twenty seventeen EFMP, um, that study started in twenty fourteen, it's just a, just a little bit before my time. But all the papers, uh, it was the, it was the facility condition that we talked about, the facility condition index where we're looking at the difference. Uh, it was the, it was the facility condition that we talked about, the facility condition index where we're looking at the different systems and how much life they have left in them, how much it costs to repair them versus replace the building. There was enrollment and I I wish I could think better in districts, um, or Brown. But um, the enrollment issue then was either over enrollment or under enrollment. And when you look back at that EFMP, it really did heavily focus on alleviating over enrollment. So you see a lot of projects were um accelerated into cycle one for that reason. And that third item is educational adequacy because you can build a brand-new school and it could still have a great facility condition, but be missing all the components that we have set as our standards for what makes a school adequate. Um, and usually that uses our EdSpec process to do a scoring of literally like how you're using every room. So does your elementary school have an art room, you know? So you, when you look at the overcrowded schools, though, you realize that the facility conditions are automatically worse because they're overcrowded and everything is working at capacity, including the HVAC system and general wear and tear. And then they've taken all of those specialty places spaces and they're using them for comprehensive education. So they also then score worse on educational adequacy. So that's how the data behind that cycle one worked. Um, how we set our next EFMP is what is being discussed um or what is going to be discussed in the coming months.
And Board Member Brown supports the Bowie community, um, Director Jackson.
Did remember that, but I couldn't regurgitate what cycle one did there besides Bowie High Scholastics. Yeah.
And BCPA, you know, we can't forget about them. They are utilized continuously, but I'm sure you have heard all of the things. Um, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Board Member Brown. Board Member Walker?
Hey there. It's always very good. I love the way you explain and put things that we, it's tangible and we can really take it away and understand. So thank you so much. Um, I wonder if you'll talk either on this call or maybe it is the next call when um opportunities for modifications after the public input tonight, so they can understand that they're giving input and how that plays into um, the CIP request as we move forward. That'll be great. Um, the second piece that I had is, if you could also talk to, I I think there was an audit that was done and or if there was an audit that was done to help identify where roof replacements are needed. I know Melwood definitely needs one. I think I saw that on there, which is good news, and you listed about four other ones, but how you determine what the CIP needs are, so it's such that then they can go into consideration, I think would be two really good things for us to understand and in the public um as we go into the next meeting. And then, thirdly, um, I, it's not for you, it's actually for Dr. Collins, is I was gonna say that I saw about four slides that I think would be amazing for Friday here, just for overall education, not to necessarily update the booklet, but maybe even on a poster. And I can touch base with you on those, but I think understanding CIP dollars is so important for our legislators because we're gonna be looking for our public to go with us for advocacy in getting these dollars back to Prince George's County Public Schools. And so the more they understand upfront, the better it is for us to be able to um help them to articulate it up.
Yeah, and if we could take that backwards, thank you, Board Member Walker. We actually have pulled out at the direction of Dr. Collins and Dr. Joseph key data uh that was shared in this presentation that will be made into posters. And there'll be a gallery walk with an opportunity for the legislators to see the data and react to it during Legislative Day.
Awesome. Yes, I saw some of it, but some slides on here, I was like, that's the one. So, okay, we could chat it offline, but I'm sure it's gonna be amazing. Thank you.
Okay, the the, just that first question, the CIP is an iterative process, so sometimes you don't necessarily see your comments. Well, if your comment is, why is my new school not in there? That becomes an EFMP question. Um, but we do try to still respond to those questions when we receive them, so people can understand at least what happened and how things were evaluated. Other things, though, when people have been like, our gyms are really hot. We have been able to use some of those repair dollars to do some of like the fans. And then you're really looking now at that, that repair category. Um, sometimes we have found out from our constituents' playgrounds that our shops didn't necessarily identify, um, but it has been pretty limited. Um, other times, it might be a window replacement request you hear from the community, and that goes back to grounds in the Building Services shop, and they look at why they ranked what they ranked, which really is a lot of age. So when you look at those roofs, what we have is this major list of roofs, and they're just by age, and they're supposed to be replaced between twenty and twenty-five years. We have roofs that are over thirty years and they're causing really, really catastro- catastrophic failures in the sense, I'm not looking at Dr. Coleman. Catastrophic failures in the sense of water infiltration, not, not a safety issue. Um, but definitely a costly issue that sometimes prohibits instruction in those spaces. So those are the ones we tend to go through first. We make, you have to have roof inspections in order to get funding for those projects. You have to have a really, really solid case and demonstrated need. I forgot the second question.
It's okay. The secondary one was just, um, um, it was about the audit anyway. And then the other one, uh, you already talked about it, but the the priority of after hearing tonight's testimony, how then is that um, added into what it is you all are gonna do for overall decisions on CIP to run to the board? You answered them both.
Thank you both so much. Board members, do we have any additional questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much for this presentation. As my colleague said, you always give us such wonderful in-depth presentations, including all of the, all of the things you put in the appendix that are so helpful for us understanding and for the community at large to understand. Um, and with that, thank you also, Dr. Coleman, for bringing this information to us. Uh, the Chair announces that the CIP public hearing will take place immediately following this meeting, and please be sure to join us. You can sign up by navigating to the website or scan the Q R code that should be displayed on the screen. If you wish to submit public comments, the link is also displayed on the screen here as well. The next Virtual Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting will be on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. So please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information and updates. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. To our viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further business. The time is now six twenty-seven, and the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.